Hello, this is Catherine Gallerani from the Carver Reporter. We're on the Area 58 Community Access Media Community Forum. Here we are with the two candidates for the Select Board. We have incumbent Bob Belbin and John Cotter.
Thank you.
And we will start with you with opening statements.
Sure. Well, first, I'd like to thank Area 58, my fellow candidate Catherine, for this opportunity to speak to the Carver residents. Just wanted to give some information about my background. I moved to Carver in early 2000, been here about 20 years. I think it was in 2007 when, like most taxpayers, I complained about my taxes and my wife didn't want to hear about it anymore and said, "Why don't you join a committee?" So then I went and joined the Finance Committee in 2007. Was on there for about 12 years, spent most of it as the Finance Committee Chairman. Got involved in other committees in town. The School Building Study Committee, Governance Committee, I was on the, let's see, Carver, Marion, Wareham Rubbish Refuge District with Bob for a while. So my idea was to give back to the community. I think it went well. I've enjoyed my time. I did take a couple of years off from working on some of these organizations. So then I thought, with the Select Board race, I thought I would try running for this year's election.
Okay, thank you. Bob?
Hi, I'm Robert Belbin. You can come, Bob. I've been in Carver for, again, 20 years plus, and I'm married to my wife Kathy for 28 years, and I have a son, James, Chris and Gabrielle. They've all went through the Carver school system, just like John's kids. Mine went through the Multi-Heg Program, which was an awesome program. Sad it's no longer there, but it was a great program. I got into politics because of a zoning issue, and I disagreed with it. And I saw things went wrong. My rights were violated and no one cared. Even when you're proved that they violated your rights, that leaves a sour taste in your mouth. That's why I got involved in the town. Been vocal and outspoken. And when I ran for election three years ago, I ran on the same thought process as that I have to be open and honest and let people know what's going on. During that time, I've been put on the Carver, Marion, Wareham Regional Refuge Disposal District. And right now, I'm the chairperson. With that, I've actually went ahead and tried to introduce us ways to save our money and to protect our money, but also invest it sensibly. And I'm happy. That's one of the proud points of me being here. But I really, I want to do this job. That's why I'm here. That's why I'm running again. I believe in term limits, and this would be my last term. So I want three more years to finish what I started. Thank you.
Back to you, John. What are your priorities in your term?
Well, coming from a past history, it seemed to be almost easier 10 years ago when we didn't have a lot of funds to spend. You know, there weren't a lot of projects going on, and we had to make use of every dollar. Now, in the next, say, three to five years, actually, you've got a lot of projects going on, one being the Green Business Park Project, the Route 44 Project, that's going to bring a tremendous amount of income to the town. I think that going forward, we've got issues that we need to deal with regards to being competitive with the towns and hiring the qualified individuals. We want to be able to keep up our capital infrastructure the way we're doing it now. You know, I believe our financial policies have trigger points in them right now that say, once we get to the point where we reduce some of our unfunded liabilities and get to a certain bond rating, we can look at possibly trying to give some tax relief to the residents as well. That's a ways off, but the planning starts now with some commercial development coming into the town providing funds.
Bob?
I agree. The Route 44 development is a huge project, but there are other things closer to the There's been a lot of neglect to some of our buildings, and we're starting to take care of those. There's been some issues with personnel in our town. When you have employees that don't follow the policies and procedures of the town, you should hold them accountable. That hasn't been done, and I've tried to do that, is hold them accountable. So I want to continue to hold people accountable. Sweeping things under the rug, I don't like that. And I tried to go ahead and say that. So that's one of the other things. To further along, I think the town needs to look at how we prepare our elected and appointed officials to take on jobs, that they understand what the open meeting law is, that they understand public records laws, and know, when they don't know something, to go ask questions. Just don't do it because they've been doing it for years and years and years this way. It's not always right. So I want to make sure that we treat our employees right now. I want to make sure that our staff has what they need to run our town.
There has been turnover in the town government. What are some ideas about ways to stabilize that for you?
Well, I think that one of the first things we need to do is to get a full-time town administrator and, you know, someone that's taking guidance from the Board of Selectmen as to what they feel the direction the town should go into. And that individual needs to be able to handle both ends of the spectrum. I would argue that, you know, some town managers handle things well politically, some financially, some deal with employees better than others. I think we need someone that's going to come in at the current situation that we're in right now and be able to, I guess, motivate and groom future employees, whether they're people that maybe have just joined the town but want to go up the ladder to the chain of command to become the manager of, call it DPW, or whatever, whatever you want to get, wherever you want to grow within your organization. But that's going to come from whoever we hire for the town administrator, so it's very important that we get that choice right.
And Bob, what do you, is the town administrator your priority or other priorities?
For the Board of Selectmen, it's a huge priority to hire the right person for the job. I feel that promoting from within is extremely important within our town. Again, like I said, giving people the tools. Right now, we hired a finance director who is very knowledgeable, who's already caught issues that's been going on for years, and she's exposed it. So it's good that we have someone available with that knowledge and experience. Keeping our management and our employees is vitally important. The insurance issue, hopefully, will be taken care of. That's a big one, by keeping staff understanding that the insurance, the 50/50 program, is not right. It's not going to keep our employees. It's not going to hire new employees, or if we do get new employees, we start them, we train them, and they're going to go somewhere else for a job. We can't that. We need to keep our employees here. We need them happy, safe, that they can earn a good wage, and just move on. And promoting from within is a great thing, but we have to give them those tools. So the town administrator is a vital person that's going to lead our town into the future. And whoever that may be, the Board of Selectmen have to make sure that it's the right person.
What are the qualities you'd want to see in the town administrator?
Well, the first, you need to be able to work with large groups of people, right? And you've got to be able to delegate. You can't be the boss for every department. So I think the town administrator walking into this role needs to understand the duties and the goals of the Select Board. And then they have to have a support team, right? They have got to have a layer underneath them that really works with people on the front line to get the task accomplished. And that person needs to be able to treat, as Bob had said, treat the employees fairly. And that needs to go right down to the entry-level position. They need to have experience in negotiating contracts. That's key. From a financial background, they should understand, you know, the basic capital building stabilization plans that we put into place, understand the effect of unfunded liabilities for health and OPEB. These are things that they should know because that's what they do for a living. So I think the people skills are very important and the ability to, I guess, as I said before, we got into a phase probably in the past 10 years where we realized that a lot of our effort wasn't going into infrastructure. You know, we have done the fire station, we've done the police station, we've repaired some of the problems with the high school, the new elementary school. That was a big push probably in the past 10 years or so that we didn't have before. So I think that's getting under control. As Bob said, there's a way to go. We do have some other projects to get completed. So the next person is going to have to probably do a lot of work at Town Hall with regards to getting people motivated again and feel like there's a secure direction that they can start with the town and they can retire with the town.
Where is that search process for the administrator?
The search process? Right now, it's the Search Committee. They're taking on that role. To be totally honest, I don't want to be part of that. I want to turn around and make sure that they do their job and they don't have us overseeing what they're doing. Let them do that part and bring us. My goal was five candidates. They can do up to five. I wasn't happy with them coming back with two candidates. I didn't think that was right. I thought they should have brought us more candidates, and when one dropped out, they should have put somebody else in as a candidate. But they felt that, I guess, the other applicants weren't good enough. There's been a lot of issues with that. For a town administrator, like John said, we don't fall that far apart of who we need. But we need a town administrator that will listen to different points of view, be able to understand that you can't please everyone, but a lot of times, it's a happy medium. And they have to understand, and I don't think we've had that happy medium. I have to say, I'm happy with Mr. Fantasy, with what he's been doing so far. He's done a very good job coming in and taking the reins and making sure that we're ready for Town Meeting and taking care of some other issues. Really, I'm happy with what he's doing. And I want to see somebody that comes in and takes the reins and understands the value of our employees.
Do you support the search process? Do you think it's a good approach?
Yeah, I absolutely do. You know, I think that you have to have a, the Board of Selectmen should say, I guess, give guidance. This is what they feel they're looking for. But to have an independent committee made up of independent thinkers to choose the possible candidates. You know, three to five would work for me from a standpoint of just having a wide list to choose from. Yeah, I think that the Search Committee was definitely the way to go.
Now, you bring a Finance Committee perspective?
Yes.
What is that perspective?
I'm kind of an open book. When I look at a particular issue, I'll look at the financial aspects first, I guess, and then look at it secondly as how does this affect the services? I mean, obviously, a town operates differently from a business. A business tries to make a profit where a town wants to provide services to the residents. You could come up with a great idea to cut $25,000 off of a cost center, but if that deprives a resident of essential services, that's really not a good idea. So I guess my financial background, because, you know, the $42 million budget that we have to work with is something that so much to understand, someone needs to work with and to make sure the funds are being spent correctly and wisely. So my experience with the Finance Committee is I've made a lot of mistakes, so I think getting, if I'm elected as a member of the Board of Selectmen, I've got a little experience going forward.
Do you, what are you, direction the North Carver project is going in? Do you support that?
Well, I do. That was a site that's been around since I moved to town. I think it was an old brownfield site. It was the Wetbuth property, and then Stump Dump and all these other things that just sat there forever unused. So the fact that we've got a potential to bring in a big user, it's a little intimidating, the size of the building going in there. But I think it's a great opportunity. My only concern, there's a lot of good things about it, but my only concern right now that I have more is traffic patents and traffic studies. You know, what is that going to do to the area? You know, we've got to make sure that we understand the impact, any kind of infrastructure that needs to be put in place to either widen roads or do whatever needs to be done so that it doesn't affect really both towns, Carver and Pluton.
And Bob, do you have concerns about the project? Are you pretty much supportive?
I think there's always concerns. If you don't have concerns, then I don't think you're doing the job. I have concerns about traffic, big-time traffic issues, knowing that there's only one way in, one way out, and you're talking to a lot of vehicles. The bylaws coming up that we're going to be voting on of increasing the height, that I don't think is an issue, is the height isn't an issue. But we still don't know what the end user is going to be. And the height issue, there's few types of businesses that utilize that type of height. I think people really need to investigate what type of business would need that type of a height. It's great for the development. The Board did sign an agreement with Hillwood. And I have to say, our Public Services, Emergency Services did an awesome job negotiating that to make sure that they're covered, that if it gets to this big and it's approved, that they can protect our town. And they've done an awesome job. I think they have one of the strongest contracts that has been developed with Hillwood and this property site. But you don't know who the end user is, and that's my concern, and not knowing who the end user is and what is it going to be. That is a concern. I just want to go back to one thing that I didn't get to speak to about was the Search Committee that you had asked John about. Yes, the Search Committee is needed. I disagreed with having one member on that committee, and I made a vocal of why. I couldn't specifically say why, but clearly, I had concerns, and my other selectmen didn't have those concerns. But we need to understand that everyone needs to be held accountable in some way, shape or form. So the committee's the way to go. Just have to be careful of who's on that committee and are they going to push a certain agenda? That's, we want to make sure that doesn't happen. So, thank you.
Do you have a response to that?
No, I mean, I think that the transition between, you know, the previous town administrator kind of was a little bit volatile. So I think that having a clear, concise manner to go through and to pick the right people to be on the committee, I think, is something that is in the preview of the Board of Selectmen, the Select Board, I should say. So yeah, I mean, I think they're the people that this town administrator is going to have to work for. So I think the natural progression is that they pick the committee members that go on.
To go back to the North Carver project, do you get a sense from the people, people who talk to you, have people approached you about their thoughts if you are elected?
I really haven't heard much from people with regards to, you know, the tax, the additional revenue, how it's going to be spent, things of that nature, because it's kind of in the early phase. People do think that we needed to do something with that site, and nobody really knew what would fit there. So I think overall, what I'm hearing is more positive. Again, we sound like broken records. The only negative I heard about it was the traffic potential and the idea of that we don't know who the user is going to be just yet because this is all being done on spec. They're going to go out and market it. Now, my guess is, in this type of building, there's probably a certain segment of customers that are going to move into something like this. So if for some reason a deal isn't worked out and it morphs into something else, I think that really needs to be communicated to all the boards and the taxpayers.
Another area that's of concern is solar projects and battery storage. Where do you fall on those?
Well, I know that, I'll take, I guess, battery storage first. Relatively, I guess, new from a standpoint of, not the same as solar, I guess. I did read a lot about it on Facebook. I saw the comments going back and forth with the pros and the cons of it. I got worried, then I wasn't worried, then I was worried, then I wasn't worried, just like most people do when they read these things. I did talk to the Fire Department, and I had a long conversation with them with regards to the dangers of it and what happens in case there's a situation with a fire and smoke and things like that, and what they would do, how they would react. The analogy they gave me was that they're ready for it. They're ready for some kind of, you know, if there's ever any incident there that they need to handle, unlike maybe the Route 44 project where, as Bob had said, they needed, they need any equipment. They need things to be able to handle something if it goes wrong there. They feel confident about the battery storage component to it. So it made me feel a little bit better. And I'm also probably, I mean, I live in North Carver, and I think I'm a mile from it, so obviously, like all residents, you've got some concerns. So I felt better about it, and I think maybe the issue right now, and from what I see it, is the placement of it seems to be the big item that people keep talking about. So I want to hear more about it at Town Meeting, because I'm assuming that both sides are going to come out and give more of a layout as to what their own individual concerns are, the pros and cons, before I can make a final decision.
And Bob, what do you think?
Yeah, being a relatively new component of the electrical industry with battery storage, I have the utmost confidence in the Fire Department in knowing what they do and how they do their job. I want to tell them how to do their job. I'm not going to do it because I'm not there. But I do have concerns for fire risks and protecting the soils and our water and aquifer. I haven't heard anything about having some type of a drainage system if something happens and they have to cool it off for a long period of time or whatnot. Where's that water all going to go? And is there a place, a dump, that this stuff would go into, some type of tank? I mean, I'm not against it. I just, we need more information, unfortunately. But I have to say, this has been going on for many years. It wasn't just started last year, and this has been going through a long-term process. And people are scared about things, and you should be. That's how you make decisions, to make sure if it's good or not. But you have to also understand that the battery storage, like anything else, doesn't last forever, and we have to make sure that if something does happen and 20 years down the road, that they're taken care of and they're not staying in here in Carver where they're more of a liability, because there's always could be something bigger coming down the road for energy storage. So not against it. I just want to make sure that everyone has the information they need.
On the Town Meeting warrant, the Town Meeting's next Tuesday at 7:00. What, how do you, is your position on the moratorium questions regarding solar and the battery storage moratorium that are proposed?
Okay. It's really frustrating to some extent that you get a warrant article put on and you don't have a whole lot of information out there on either one of why you have a moratorium and why you don't have a moratorium on it. I think it all goes back to information. I also think that it's a political move to some extent to say, "Well, if we push it off for another year or put a moratorium, then maybe they'll walk away from this." So you have to look at all of these different options. It'll be interesting to hear the different sides of why, because this was petition articles, which is a great process, and I've done that too through the petition article process. But you need the information first, and you need to know why, what is their intent? Is it to get more information or is it to delay? And the information that I have, and as you see Facebook, you can go around there and you can do your own research for it, I turn around and say, "Well, sometimes it's good to take a break and say, 'Hey, timeout.'" We do that in the medical field all the time. We have timeouts. Before you start something, do we have the right person? Do we have all the equipment? Do we have everything that we need to do our job? So maybe this is a timeout that we have to take. So I still want to hear the pros and cons of why we should and why we shouldn't.
Do you have a position on the moratorium articles?
I'm trying to remember, when we went back, let's go back to the kind of little beginning of this with regards to a solar bylaw. It was primarily generated because there was a property, a residential neighborhood in North Carver that had a solar field put right in the middle of it without any choice. I remember going through the process, hearing the stories. I remember visiting some of my friends over there that I saw their backyards now that there was no more trees. It was just solar. So we formed the Solar Bylaw Committee, and I think it went about a year. And they went through it, and they tried to come up with protection for the residents so that when the next one came down the pike, they could say, "Okay, now we've got a bylaw." I think we might have been one of the first towns to come up with one. Now, since then, I'm not sure how many times it's been tweaked, but the industry has changed. Solar panels have changed, technology consistently changes. So I think, and I could be wrong, that we've updated it once or twice, but something went wrong, because now we went from having a lot of protections for residents to having a project in South Carver with the telephone poles in the box. So something went wrong. So the question is, was the solar bylaw or was it the actual enforcement of the solar bylaw? So I don't necessarily know what the moratorium does unless someone can say, "I need 12 months because we're going to do this in the first few months, then this, then this, then this." What are we trying to achieve? Because I think that if we revised the Solar Bylaw Committee and brought them back into play and then got people from both sides of the issues with this, get residents involved, environmentalists, whatever part of this new group, I think that we could probably come up with an agreement within, say, six months and go to a Fall Town Meeting and address these issues. I'd personally rather be voting on a new bylaw change than on a, you know, a deferral of a decision for X number of months or a year before making the decision. I think we have enough information that we need and we have the people in place that we could go to it right now and make a decision on the fall.
Are there topics covered on the warrant that are of concern to you that we haven't discussed?
Well, I just want to get a little more understanding about, well, there's a lot of spending going on. I see the capital outlay budget, it's about $4 million. So I want to get a better handle on that, on what that's doing to our financial plans. There are all seem to be worthy causes, but I want to get an understanding as to the decision-making behind what projects were chosen to fund and when. The other thing I think is the TDR bylaw. I just want to get a better handle on that. I read through the, I saw it published last night, so I went through the warrant article, and I got to say, some of the calculations, I'm having a tough time with as to the rescinding and receiving areas. So I just want to get a better handle on that.
Bob, I mean, you're pretty well-versed with the warrant, but...
So I agree about the transfer of development rights. One of the issues that I do have with that is that you have a project now that they want to do this, and they want to move from a nice neighborhood that they've created right next to a golf course, move it over to another neighborhood that has high tens and wires going through it. So I mean, how does, how do the two compare? That your affordable housing is going to be over here, and it kind of gets me to think of the train tracks splitting, that here, the people over here, they're rich and wealthy, and over here, the not-so-rich and wealthy. So that is an issue, and the calculations blow my mind. The warrant article, the one that I, with the Redevelopment Authority, I want to just say that John helped with this when he was on the RDA, I'm not reading, I'm sorry, not reading, the Carver, Marion, Wareham Regional Refuge Disposal District.
It's a long name.
Long name, yeah. When he was on it, they started the process. We refined it a little bit more, and we put it to the Town Meeting here to vote it in. It's a new agreement with Carver and Wareham. It clearly sets out what we can and can't do with the district, and if there's money left over, we have 1.2 million right now, if there's money left over after 20 years when we don't have to deal with the South Carver landfill, if nothing happens with that, then we can return money back to the town. So that's a big one. The other one is, and I posted it on Facebook and I'm quite vocal about it, it's the transfer of 17 acres of land with the wells in South Carver for Cranberry Village Residence Associations. Rick LaFond and the president of that association had emails going back and forth. Rick LaFond and the president of that association, uh, had emails going back and forth about a deal to, to give it back to them for $1. Um, and I'm against that, I'm opposed to that. It's nothing about the seniors. It's that our open space plan and our, um, our different, um, policies and procedures that we have in our town from the 1980s have all been geared toward protecting wells and protecting our water. To look at different areas to increase the opportunities for if the town needs water, where can we get it? Well, us giving away 17 acres of land and the well system in South Carver is not the best interest of the town. It's not. No other option was given to the town, uh, or to the select board for this property. And there are other, uh, there are other options. And I proposed a lease option. It's the best for everyone. But giving away land is not a good precedence to set. We just have not, as a board of selectmen, actually seen everything dealing with this subject. We haven't had an end-up discussion about it. So it took a lot of research by me to go through this and say, hey, this is not the right way to go. I think our finance people and our, um, department heads did an excellent job, um, really looking at what we need to do now and the wants. So the capital budget is a lot right now, but there's a lot of things that weren't done for many, many years. And the air conditioning system for the library should have been done years ago and it never did. It kept on getting delayed and delayed and delayed. I remember that it was said that, oh, we, we can switch this to a different part and, and it's going to last another year and it didn't. The siding on the town hall falling apart, bees getting into the building, um, just not, we need to maintain those properties. So, um, the one thing I do concern me about, which is kind of small on the basis of our budget, is the, um, the school smart boards are already outdated. So they have to replace those, so that's in the budget to replace those. And we just had the elementary school, we put them all in and now we're going to take them out and we're going to redo a different type of technology. So, um, we have to understand that these are the ways of doing business and we have to make sure that they're, um, they're good for our town and I think our officials did a good job this year.
Want to give you the opportunity to respond to that?
Um, I think we've been a, a lot of the same, issues on the same page. I think the only one you talked about was the Cranberry Village, um, component that you added. I think that, um, way back when, I think when, uh, when they first started the process of buying the village, I went to a few meetings. Um, and I supported that they wanted to take control of their own destiny. It made sense. I know that when they looked at financing the purchase of the village, uh, there was a big concern, um, from the, from the lender, that they're making sure they're keeping the reserves in place in order to maintain the infrastructure. I believe they've done that with regards to the internal piping, I think, going to the wells. Uh, I know that the prior owner did donate the wells, as Bob said, back, um, back in the eighties. So getting to the point now where, um, the town has invested funds, I guess, in maintaining the wells, I did take a look at, Bob did a lot of work on the history, uh, of what went on over there. As far as the value standpoint, I mean, numerically, I think there was a $400,000 grant, some other costs that went towards, um, maintaining those wells. What is the value? I mean, I think the town's depreciation schedule says that you have a 20, 25-year life on things like that and we're kind of approaching that. So, you know, it's a value really to nobody else other than the Cranberry Village and the town. And then you have to look at the fact that, um, you know, what, what's it going to take to maintain that well? You know, are there future liabilities coming down the road for either party? So are we really losing an asset or are we losing a liability down the road? To the idea that we could have problems in water in South Carver, um, yeah, it could happen. Uh, I know that, I don't, I don't think I'd, I'd be looking to do anything like a South Carver Water District because, you know, North Carver Water District's been a pretty big challenge. So it's the unknown really, right? What, what is the need going to be down there? Right now, the, uh, I feel confident that the Cranberry Village will maintain the well system should the town meeting members vote to give it back to them. They know they need to have reserves in place. They should have been educated by their, I think, third-party water company that's maintaining this with them. So, um, you know, it may be a good ti, a good deal for the town, uh, getting a reduced liability down the road and something that is better for the Cranberry Village owners.
What are your budget priorities going in if you were elected?
What areas to fund budget-wise?
Yes.
Um, I think, well, there's always, there's always educational opportunities, right? You know, offering more programs. Um, I know that, you know, uh, this, the school probably has many ideas as to what they'd like to do. Um, I know the part of the agreement with the Route 44, uh, project was to adding additional staff to police and fire. And, and I know it's supposed to be like a three-year type of scenario, but, um, I know I've talked to the police chief and, and he has a targeted number of what he wants to do with regards to having a number of police officers, um, there. So I think these are all, um, uh, programs that we need to look at. Uh, I'm not aware right now of, uh, a lot of other deficiencies that, that are going on right now in the town. So I think I'd focus more, more in that area.
Bob had mentioned earlier about areas and the finances that weren't, what he felt was acceptable approach. Do you know what I mean?
Well, what I, what I had said is that our, our finance director had found errors in, in how, uh, certain monies, uh, in our budgets, in our accounts, um, that, wouldn't say hidden, but no one did anything with. And if you don't use money in a certain account within a certain period of time, it should be reverted back. But in my opinion is that, um, they weren't put back in the budget for a reason that, well, maybe it could be a slush fund for another project that they're going to do. And that's not the intent. If you have a budget item that, um, you're going to go ahead and say, we're going to put $150,000 toward a computer system and you only spend 100, but you keep 50,000 after town meeting, after town meeting, after town meeting, you don't put that money back in, then we can't use it. And once the use of that account, anything extra should go back into the general fund or whatever fund that it's supposed to go into. So, um, I, I'm happy that she did that. And that's one of the things that we need from a town administrator to, and the finance director, and even our department heads to look at what's going on and if they question it, or even if employees question it, to have some way to go to. And, and that just wasn't the case sometimes. So, I mean, and the finance committee, I have to say, they do a great job for what they do. And, um, they were surprised by the North Carver Water District of having almost $800,000 in their account, yet we're still charging people their water rates even though that, I don't think they even knew they had that much money. I don't know, but, I mean, something like that should have been brought to our attention and said, hey, listen, why, why is this like this? I mean, are you going to need all that money to replace a well or a, um, a generator? So, I mean, I'm, I'm not a financial whiz. Um, I am not, all right? But when you look at things that come before your desk and you question them and you look at something that says, all right, you come to a contract come to you and you start reading the contract and you're like, wait a second, 2%. I'm not a brain wizard, but this doesn't equal 2%. And when you question why this doesn't equal 2% and it's actually 2-point-something percent, well, you told us it was 2%. I question the character of the information we're getting to because you don't turn around and say that this department head, this one, this one get 2%. But then this one over here, they're going to get 2.1% or 2.05% or whatever it is. Well, 2% is 2%. Don't come to me and say, it's 2%. But I'm not a math wizard. You are. Okay? But I can look at this and say, this isn't right. And I've done that. Okay? So you need to question it. You have to be strong and question it and that's what I've done. So, I mean, thank you.
Well, I guess you both have served on the redevelopment authority. Are there any parcels of land in town that you feel could be protected or purchased?
I've not served on the redevelopment.
Oh, you have not?
No, that was my mistake.
Oh, okay.
I said that, I'm sorry. We served on the Carver, Marion, Wareham Regional Refuge Disposal District.
Oh, I was sure, okay.
Uh, I was on the RDA.
Do you see any projects, land, development, conservation land?
Oh, yes. Um, so when I was on the redevelopment authority, um, I actually went to our assessor's office and I requested all town-owned properties. I wanted to look at every single property we have and we own. And I went through all those properties and I targeted properties that I thought would be great for affordable housing. And, um, two of those properties are Crystal Lake area on Robert's Way, uh, which is hopefully going to be given to the board of selectmen and the board of selecting can go ahead and give them to the redevelopment authority and that they can help develop it in some way, shape or form for affordable housing. When I did that research, I actually found a, three other properties that were potential, um, affordable housing units. They were in family neighborhoods and unfortunately, the town administrator at the time, um, worked to put those out for a, um, for auction and they got bid on and they had houses built on them at full price. Uh, so, um, I don't think that served the affordable housing in our town any good. But I, I, I took it as a slap in the face to me of all the work that I did to actually find those properties and then to say, okay, here you go, we're going to sell them. Uh, the town did get one-time monies with that, uh, the sale of the properties, but, um, I think the better would have been if we went ahead and used them for affordable housing.
What are your thoughts on affordable housing? Has, has it been approached?
Well, I think, um, I think our affordable housing percentage is low in Carver and I think that we do need a plan. Uh, I don't disagree with Bob said about, you know, if, if the RDA finds properties that can be used for the affordable housing component, that we should. But I think the disparity is pretty large. I'm not sure if it's 3% or something like that, that, that is a targeted number. Um, and I don't think, um, the, um, mobile home communities tar, uh, kept within that, that percentage. So i- it's a big, um, it's a big challenge in order to put a plan in place to tackle that. But, uh, I, I think it's something that, yeah, I mean, it, it's, Carver's a great place to live. Properly planning for the affordable housing component of, of what's needed here is, is a, a project we're looking at.
Do you like the direction the town is moving in?
Um, yeah, I mean, you know, I, I always thought that, um, again, getting back to the rural feel, the rural character, everybody loves that, that's why a lot of us moved to Carver, right? Uh, what we kind of concerned at one particular point in time is our, our tax rate, you know? Um, and it keeps going up and up and up, you know? And, and I always thought that we could use more of a commercial component to it. Now, we, many, many years ago, I think it was the master plan, they created the North Carver Ovalay District where they wanted to focus more commercial development in there, which made sense. So I think camera balance, we're getting that, we're getting towards that direction. We'll have a nice balance of both rural and commercial. That'll allow us to basically, uh, grow as a town and provide better services and offerings to the residents.
What do you think?
Um, the direction of this town, I, I mean, I grew up in Pembroke. Pembroke had a large cranberry industry in the town. Uh, the town made some really, in my opinion, good choices to push, uh, commercial to the North Pembroke area, uh, right near Route 3. I see Carver doing a lot of the same thing. The only problem is, is the cranberry industry in Pembroke is virtually gone. And that's sad and I'd hate for that to happen here in Carver. One of the things I don't like about solar is on cranberry bogs. Um, I, every time I drive by the center of town, I see the cranberry bogs beside the school and the fire station, I just shake my head and said, that is not the place for it. Agriculture is agriculture and, um, when you convert your agriculture to solar panels, that just, I don't think that that's right. That doesn't help the rural character of our town because that's not the rural character of our town. Unfortunately, um, there's not much we can do about it now. The solar and, um, South Carver with the poles, that's just wrong. And I don't blame our officials for that. I blame the company that decided to make the change without telling the town they're making the change. And it's taken a long time for them to get pulled out. And that shouldn't happen. Every day, every day you have that ca, potential chemicals dropping through and, and what are those chemicals doing to the, the cranberry plants that are already in there? Are they affecting them? I mean, I personally wouldn't want to take a cranberry that had, um, pressure-treated holes stuck in the ground right beside them. So that's an issue. I mean, rural character, yeah, we moved here because of rural character. It's a nice, small town. You know a lot of people, it's getting bigger and bigger, so you don't know as many. And as I've found, uh, when my kids were in school, you know a lot more people that when your kids get out of school, you end up, you don't have as many people you know because your group has now dwindled. And, um, seniors are a huge po, population in our town. Uh, we have to offer, uh, them different types of services and they come in different ways, shapes and sizes. A person who's retired at 62, all right, who is fully active, um, they want to go out on vacations, they want to go and do activities, um, exercise, um, tennis, um, but they want to do them with people their own age, um, or even younger because it keeps them younger. Uh, when you get into your seventies, uh, some of your things that you're doing there is a little less active, but you still need your brain to keep moving. So you may end up picking up a book or do a book club or, um, sub-type of activities with your hands to keep moving. Uh, Sudoku's and bingo and these other activities that you need. So this is all part of rural character. So we have to look at all different age groups in our town to make sure we give each one the right services that they need. And it's tough. It, it's tough to balance those. So rural character's important, but we have to make sure it's done reasonably.
Do you have other goals that you hadn't, that you haven't touched on for your term?
Uh, if I was fortunate enough to get elected, um, no, I, I, again, not to sound like a broken record, I, I think one major goal right now is to plan for the growth of Carver's commercial business and to do it right, you know, and making sure that the funds are spent wisely. Uh, and, and again, I won't be the person that comes up with that great idea. It's the, it's the groups, it's the working with all the outside entities and working with the board of selectmen as a team to find out and listen to the residents as what, what their concerns are. So, um, I, I think the future development is going to allow us to take Carver in, you know, positive direction.
Okay.
And, and to Bob's point was, I did, I stood up at town meeting when I saw the, uh, when they started doing the, uh, the solar panels on top of the bog on Main Street and I just spoke out against it only because I just envisioned it like, people drive by the landfill and say, who, who would have imagined that put a landfill on top of, on a, on a main road near our aquifer? And I just said the same thing, who's going to think, I put solar, I support, I put solar panels on top of a bog on, on, on 58. So I didn't, I, I like the idea of agriculture myself and that the whole idea of these, uh, poles with solar on top of it is something I think we should look at further.
So, um, if we're getting to the end,
Yes.
which I think we are, um, I just want to say thank you very much. I have nothing personally against John. Uh, we do have some differences of opinions. I think we have a lot less differences of opinions, um, but my feeling is, is that I'm the best candidate. Uh, I've done it for three years already. I'm ready for another three years. Uh, there's some unfinished business that needs to be done and, um, I just want to do it. I want to represent you and I think that's what I've done these past three di, three years, is represent the residents. And I've made some decisions that I'm not happy with and I've made some that I'm super happy with. I know my three years, uh, the one thing that I can say that I've changed this town on is the EMS service. It frustrated me when they found out that in order to become a member of it, you had to donate 80 hours of your time, um, that you weren't paid for, which I felt was, um, orientation time. 80 hours, uh, and I felt it was the pay-to-play. You should, the thought process was, um, You should, the thought process was, you should be privileged to work for Carver EMS. Yeah, you should be privileged to work for Carver EMS, but you should also be paid for it. And I think that's one of the biggest things that I've done, for this town to know that I made a change in the working conditions of our EMS service by that one thing. So that's the type of selectman I have been. And I did say selectman, I did not say select board member, because I am a selectman right now. That's what I am. I'm on a select board, but I'm a selectman. All right? So I want to thank you very much.
John, you closing remarks, please?
Well, yeah, I would just like to say, reference to Bob, you couldn't have found two people that were, that tackled a situation polar opposites, completely ends the spectrum or in the district together, but in the end, two opposing views came together, and we both agreed to move forward with the agreement. So I think that, that's something that I'd bring to the table with regards, so should I be lucky enough to be voted in as, to the select board. I think that I've worked with people that I disagreed with on various committees. I've been able to see other sides of the issues come into some kind of agreement. I think that my experience is going to help, should I be elected to the select board down the road, to help plan for the future, as I've said, and to bring more, I guess, you know, services to, to the taxpayers, looking at certain, certain areas where we need to improve our finances. You know, we've got a lot of things under control right now, but I also want to look at the non-financial aspect of it, what is actually affecting taxpayers on a day-to-day basis, because there are a lot of issues that I'm probably not aware of. So I would like to thank the opportunity here, the Area 58's given me to express our views. I'd also like to thank my wife, Donna, my son Jake, my daughter Emma, for sticking with me through this. I'd like to thank everyone that's supporting my campaign, and I respectfully ask for your vote. Thank you.
Carver's annual town election will be held Saturday, April 23rd, polling hours are 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The Carver Middle High School Gymnasium. And thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1769.41][1769.41][music]